Good evening and welcome to the City Council Closed Session for the City of Beaumont. Today is October 21st, 2025. I will call this meeting to order at 4:30. Kevin Rollcall, please.
Councilmember Finn?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember White? Mayor Pro Tem Boyd?
Here.
Mayor Lara?
Here. Public comments. This meeting will be open to the public and conducted in a virtual format to be inclusive of all participation preferences. Public comment participation is encouraged by emailing any comments to the City Clerk's office or by calling in using the phone number provided at the front of the agenda. Mr. Cole, do we have any public comments for closed session?
I have no written requests. Benny, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Thank you. Ms. Pedro, can you read the items for your closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd be happy to. For the benefit of the public, the City Council is going to adjourn to closed session to consider its items B1 through B7, and the following is a summary of each. B1, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code 54956.8. The property is described as vacant land with APN numbers 481240011 and 419770007. That is near the northeast corner of Second and Pennsylvania Avenue and APN number 428020004, east of Manzanita and south of Seneca Springs Parkway in Beaumont. The agency negotiators, the city manager Elizabeth Gibbs or her designee. The negotiating parties are the City of Beaumont as potential purchaser and the Beaumont Unified School District as potential seller and under negotiations are price and terms of the transaction. B2 is conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. Moesa versus City of Beaumont. And in San Bernardino Superior Court, the case number is set forth on the agenda itself for the benefit of the public. B3, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. Gary Blackwell versus the City of Beaumont. That is venueed in United States District Court Central District, and the case number is set forth on the agenda itself. B4, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. City of Beaumont versus Caesar Emilio Perez Aguilar. The Riverside County case number is set forth on the agenda. B5 is conference with legal counsel. Initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D4. B6, public employee appointment employment pursuant to Government Code Section 94957. The title is the city manager. And finally, B7, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code 54957. Again, the title is city manager. That concludes my closed session report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pedro. With that, we'll go ahead and adjourn to closed session.
Please let the record reflect that Councilmember White was in attendance in closed session. He arrived at 4:37. With that, I'll call this regular session to order at 6:32. No, 6:12, excuse me. Big difference. Can I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Finn?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Mayor Protim Voight?
Here.
Mayor Laura?
Here.
Ms. Phaedra, can we have a report out from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor Laura. With respect to item B4, I'd like to report that that item was removed and not considered by the council. And in accordance with the Brown Act, B1 through B3 and B5 through B7, there is no action to report at this time. That concludes my report out of closed session.
Thank you very much, Ms. Phaedra. We don't have any requests for excused absences. This evening, we'll have the invocation by Pastor Paulo Bacheri and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Martinez.
Dear Father in heaven, we stop to thank you for the gift of life that we're all here. And thank you for this meeting. May this meeting be productive for the good of this city and its people. Thank you for Mayor Lara and his wonderful team. May your presence lead everything and may your presence bless everyone as we participate in this meeting for your honor and glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda this evening?
No, Mayor.
Okay, so with that, any conflicts, conflict of interest to disclose at this time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a conflict for item G7 due to proximity, how close I live to the project. And that's on the consent calendar. And that's on the consent calendar.
Item G seven, okay. Thank you, Councilmember Finn.
Mayor, just a point of clarification. If it's on the consent calendar, we, he can still vote with the rest of us on the entire consent calendar, correct?
Yes, the record will reflect that he has a conflict with respect to item G seven, and there is no need to step down from the dais at this time.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember White. Okay, so that brings us to announcements, recognitions, item E one, Riverside County Supervisor, Fifth District, Presentation, Youth Jobs and Internships.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor Laura, good evening, council members. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to be here today to talk about, a little bit about what Supervisor Gutierrez in Riverside County is doing. My name is Ulyssa, and I'm a legislative assistant for Supervisor Gutierrez. We have a lot of youth programs and youth internships in our county that we thought we would come share with the help of Ms. Laura to, you know, if you know anyone, if you know any youth that qualify, to please share with them. Great, great resources, so we'll go ahead and get started. You know, Office of Supervisor Gutierrez, we cover Moreno Valley, Hemet, San Jacinto, Cali Mesa, Banning, Beaumont, Nuevo, Cherry Valley, and Cabazon. And Supervisor really is passionate about helping our youth, you know, get ready in their next steps as they head into quote-unquote "the real world." So we'll talk about, about four or five main programs today. The Youth Employment Program, the Youth Community Corps, Youth Advisory Council, our Second Chance Program, and the SONG Program. So for our Youth Employment Program and our Youth Community Corps, these are two very similar programs, and I'll explain their difference in a little bit. But the, the basis of this program is that we pay businesses to hire youth in our county, to hire youth that live in any of the cities or areas I mentioned. We subsidize the wages for these businesses to give these youth ages sixteen to twenty-four work experience. The youth don't need to have any work experience necessary. Let's say they want a job, but they don't know what a resume is, they don't know how to interview. We help them with all of that. So for this program, we partner with the California Family Life Center, they're located in Hemet, and they provide the youth interview prep, resume help, and they place them in a work site throughout the county so that they're able to get work experience. It's paid, they work about three months, twenty hours a week, sixteen fifty an hour. They, again, like I mentioned, get training and mentorship and also career exploration. So the requirement is that they're ages sixteen to twenty-four, they live in our district, and that's pretty much it. We want to make it easy for everyone to access these opportunities. The Youth Community Corps works similar, where we subsidize the wages for these youth to get hired. However, this is for the public sector. The other one was just for private sector businesses, so they can work for like retail, they can work for like a lawyer's office, anything like that. This one is just specifically for school districts, water agencies, cities, and any other government agency. Similar, they work twenty hours a week for about three to five months. This is one, though, is ages eighteen to twenty-six. The previous one was ages sixteen to twenty-four. Very similar, let's say they've never worked in a government office before and they want that extra help. CFLC, the center we work with to do this program, they give them that opportunity. Let's say, for example, they don't have transportation, but they really want to work. That's also provided, which is a plus, because a lot of youth, sometimes they don't have transportation, or they rely on their parents, so it limits them in what they can do, but we take care of all of that. Let's say, you know, when you're working in a government office, you need professional clothing, but the youth, for some reason, you know, they might not have that, that's also provided for the youth as well. So it's a wraparound holistic service that we want to provide our youth in the, in the district to be able to get work experience, especially in government and private sector. These two are the flyers, I'll also email them, so they're shared with you. It's very simple, it's not really an application that they do where they get rejected or accepted. It's more so a questionnaire where they put their interests, because really, we want to try to place them in sites where it aligns with what they want to do in the future. And then, our next program is our Second Chance Program. This program is also for ages sixteen to twenty-four. The students have to live in District Five. However, this one is very specific to a certain population in our district, which is justice-impacted youth or justice-involved. It doesn't have to be them directly, but let's say their parents or a family member or a sibling or something like that, and they qualify for this program. Very similar, this is paid work experience that we subsidize the wages for, either in the public or the private sector, twenty hours a week for about three months, also provides career exploration. This one has a little bit more case management, because you are working with like a different population of students, so it does have more individualized services and more case management in case the student needs anything beyond like transportation and clothing and things like that. The individual that was in this picture here, he was going through in and out of the system a lot, he had a substance abuse issue, and he was able to go through this program, and he was able to get employed, and then the company that he was working for, medical supplier company, hired him on full-time, and now they have him traveling all over like the states to be able to, you know, do his job. And, and he said that this program really helped him get back on his feet and helped him, give him that independence and that like self-sustaining ability for himself. And we really, that's what we want this program to be, not just like a three-month job, but after the three months, where do you go? What do you do? How do we get you on a sustainable path to be able to support yourself, to be able to get experience for yourself, and things like that? And this one's the flyer as well, again, not really an application, but more so a questionnaire so that we can get more information about the youth. A lot of the youth that participate in this program are referred from our probation department. However, anyone can refer a youth, or a youth can apply, and that information's there, and they'll reach out to them and get them started in the process. The other program that we have is our Youth Advisory Council. This serves as like a student government for the county. Every district in the county has a Youth Advisory Council. District Five takes students that are from our district, our area. They have a lot of activities, like Youth in Government Day, which is shadowing county employees, Youth Retreat, which is leadership experiences, a youth summit, it's like a conference. We also provide community service projects for them, park cleanups, care packages, guest speakers, and all the requirements are that they attend a high school in Riverside County and be able to attend bi-weekly meetings and service events and things like that. And also, it's an opportunity for you to get involved in like legislative advocacy. We don't know what the youth need if they don't come and tell us sometimes, so we, we want to stress is that it is open enrollment all year round, so they can join when they'd like. And a really big perk of this is that they do get a scholarship for every year they're in the program. I believe the scholarship used to be five hundred dollars a year, but they're bumping it up to a thousand dollars a year, so if they're in it for two years, that's two thousand dollars, and if they're in it for all four years, that's four thousand dollars at the end when they graduate. So that's a big amount when you're starting in college, and you need a lot of supplies and tuition and things like that. So we really want to motivate our youth to, to join this and get that experience that looks great for college applications. And then, our final program that we'll be talking about today is our SONG Program. This one's a little unique, it stands for Sparking Originality in New Generations. This program is a music program that's a two-day immersive music workshop twice a month for three months, so they go two weekends a month for three months. What this is, is I bring students from our district ages fourteen to eighteen to a studio in Tustin where they get to do hands-on songwriting, music production, recording, performance skills, like mentorship from industry experts. We always say like, you don't know what you don't know. There are a lot of careers in the music and entertainment industry, and sometimes, you know, the students in our district might not have the opportunity to get to learn about those careers, so this is what this program is striving to do. We do it in collaboration with the Andy Vargas Foundation. If you're familiar with Andy Vargas, he's the lead singer for Carlos Santana and the Santana Musical Group. So he has a nonprofit dedicated to helping underserved youth achieve careers and opportunities in the music industry. The camp is a hundred percent free for students. We call it a camp, but they don't actually sleep over there in the studio. They go Saturday morning, come back Saturday evening, go again Sunday morning, come back Sunday evening. Parents are more than welcome to attend with the students, you know, if they feel a little weird about, oh, they're gonna go, you know, outside of the county pretty far, it's about an hour and a half away. They can go and attend the whole day with the student, food is provided, all the equipment is provided. We tell students to, you know, you don't have to sing, if you play an instrument that qualifies. Let's say you don't sing or play an instrument, but you like music production, or you like songwriting, or you like DJing, or you like poetry, or you like art, or even like tech and like lighting and sound, you know, when it takes to produce music, it's not just singing or instruments, it's much more than that. And that's what we want to communicate to students so that they're able to open the doors for themselves and not tell themselves no, and, and try something new, and, you know, it might turn into something that they can do for the long run in their careers. So through this program, again, it's not really an application of like rejection or acceptance, it's more so a questionnaire to gauge like where they are with music and their interests. This program also offers a scholarship for graduating seniors, and they also offer a lot of connections and mentorship as well. So I know I went a little bit quick, just because I want to be respectful of time. However, if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them right now, or if you think of a question later on, my email and our office number is there as well. I will do a little, just quick announcement for another program that we have that we don't publicize as much because it is limited, there are a lot of limited spots. We have a Community Risk Reduction Program that we do in partnership with the City of Hemet. This is a program where students ages fourteen to eighteen, or my apologies, eighteen to twenty-four, my apologies, there's so many ages, sixteen to twenty-four, sixteen to twenty-four, are able to participate in a firefighting academy with the City of Hemet. They get paid as well, they work twenty hours a week, twenty dollars an hour, they get all sorts of experiences if they want to be a firefighter, any, as long as they are within the ages sixteen to twenty-four and live in our district, they are, they can apply. We don't publicize this as much, just because we get a lot of applications and the cohort is only limited to twenty spots. The other programs have a more open enrollment where the cohort's not as limited. However, these programs are ARPA-funded, so we do need, we do have spending deadlines for these programs. The Youth Community Corps program right now is at funding capacity, however, we are allocating more funding, which is why we still like to promote it. So if anyone has any questions, please feel free to ask.
I think we're good, Ms. Navarro.
Okay, awesome, thank you so much, and if you want to have any other questions, you can always email me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brings us to item E two, Riverside County Workforce Development, Presentation Services and Resources for Businesses.
My name is Mario Parles with Riverside County Workforce Development, specifically the Employer Services Team, and I'm gonna be giving you a quick presentation on some of our services with business services and employer services, but also give a quick thank you to the Beaumont City Council for giving the, the opportunity to speak and present some of our programs to you. So who are our customers with workforce development? We work closely with our adult services, employer services, youth services, meaning that customers that come in for training services, as well as employers and organizations, nonprofits who come in for employer services. So vocational training for the customers and reimbursement programs for the businesses. And if you use services, it's kind of mixed in too, they have an employer service size, employer services side as well as a career services side, so they can go into different kinds of training, just what Ulyssa was explaining before, that kind of helps out the youth navigating what they kind of want to do. My specific service is with the employers. So we do a lot of different services for the businesses, including things like resource fairs, job fairs, recruitment, and HR hotline that I did bring the flyer for this time, as well as other reimbursement programs that I'm gonna get into very quickly. So as I said, we have different programs, resources, and services for them, for businesses, regardless of what stage they are and their business phase, whether it's attraction and recruitment with our job fairs and recruitment ourselves, whether it's training and retaining, when they're hiring new, new hires or incumbent workers who want training to be upscaled, as well as downsizing. We know that happens with different companies, and all companies are in different life cycles, but we have services for them at whatever cycle they're at. As I mentioned, we do have things like an online job board, we have applicant screening, our on-the-job training program, our free HR hotline, and our referral to our other services and resources. We work very closely with our EDD partners, with our Department of Rehabilitation partners to try to get the customer and employer connected with as many programs as possible. So today, I mainly want to talk about three programs, and those are the on-the-job training program, the incumbent worker training program, and the employer connect program. So we have a lot of programs, but I do have a time limit today, so even though I would love to explain all the programs to everyone here, I'm gonna focus on those three today. So our on-the-job training program, this is one of our reimbursement programs coming from our WIOA funding. WIOA stands for the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. It's a federal fund from where we receive our funding for our services, career services and employer services alike. So basically what it is, it's a reimbursement program where if a business hires an individual that fits our qualifications, we can reimburse fifty percent for the first four hundred eighty hours. So if this new hire earns ten thousand dollars in the first four hundred eighty hours, we can reimburse five thousand dollars to the business. And we know that money at times is very essential to the business, regardless of whether it's a small, medium, or large-sized business, because we know how much is invested into that new hire, whether it's through the training or just the onboarding section of it, it is quite expensive for the business. So through this program, they're able to hire and have that little bit of, you know, reassurance that this new hire will result, and also some funding for themselves at the end of it. So I'll go on to the next program. So our next program is the Uncumbr Worker Training Program. This one is also a reimbursement program where we can reimburse ninety to fifty percent of the cost of training that results in certification, that results in a promotion or wage increase. So the goal of this program is to upscale incumbent workers that are already at the company. So there's a wide array of different industries, you know, throughout Beaumont itself as well. So there's many companies who may need certification in HR, you know, certification in water restoration. There's a lot of different certificates that a lot of incumbent workers can receive, and our goal with the, with this program is to connect and to incentivize the business to upscale their workers. One of the key requirements for this one is that if you are sending one person, they have to be employed for six months or more. If it's a cohort, meaning two or more, fifty percent of that cohort needs to be employed six months or more. That gives them the opportunity, you know, to send maybe someone new and someone who's already been there, and it doesn't leave out the person who is brand-new. So we want to tailor that so all individuals for the company can participate in the program, and to have as many opportunities for them to get upscaled as possible. And like I said, fifty to ninety percent gets reimbursed depending on the size of the company, but that ten percent share that is paid by the company is usually paid for in wages. So basically, the wages, the hours they worked when they did the training, if it's on company time, which it should be, then that's what the business pays for. So if the cost of the training was four thousand eight hundred, their wages is twenty dollars an hour, they did twenty hours, that's four hundred dollars, that's right around the, the ten percent we're looking for. So basically, all of it can be paid for, it's just a business-to-business kind of thing for them. So, last but not least, we have the employer connect program. So what this is, is a one-time-use program for businesses looking to hire someone. Now, this one doesn't need any other qualifications for that new hire, that new employee, other than the new hire being full-time and permanent status. So this one is a one-hundred percent reimbursement of wages up to twenty dollars an hour for four hundred eighty hours. So basically, it's very similar to the OJT program, the only difference is that it can only be used once, and there is no real qualification states for it, as long as a person is full-time permanent status, they qualify, and it's up to twenty dollars an hour for four hundred eighty hours, which results in a max of nine thousand six hundred. So what that means, excuse me, so what that means is that if you pay more than twenty dollars an hour, if it's twenty-one, you just pay that one dollar difference for that time, but the rest is reimbursed. If it's less, we can only reimburse upwards of the max. So if it was fifteen dollars an hour, just fifteen times four hundred eighty, and that becomes your, your max reimbursement. So this one needs to get updated, so it should be thirty employers that have contracts now, it's around two hundred eighty thousand in wages reimbursed, but we still hope to get that number a lot higher, especially in our Beaumont and adjoining Banning area. And to get the word out for the program, as Ulyssa said also, that we do have a deadline on some of these, so when I do meet with new businesses within our area, whether it's Hemet, San Jacinto, or Banning, Beaumont, I let them know, you know, let's get everything in order and push paperwork, because we want you to, you know, get paid. And this one can be, you can go back for this one, so it doesn't have to be a new hire that you're going to hire, we can be retroactive for this program. And then here is a flyer, the no-cost HR hotline that can be used for businesses for free. So before I get to the last side, I'd like to announce that I'm going to be at the Beaumont Business Hub, starting on November fourth, on Tuesdays, still need to get my hours in order, but I will be there on Tuesdays, so I would love to connect with any and all Banning, Beaumont businesses and have a one-on-one with everyone, because every business, you know, requires something different compared to the next. So I want, I want to be able to, to be there and tailor to their needs to see how I can help them best, because we have a lot of programs, and I'm sure one of these programs will be beneficial to our businesses in the city of Bea, of Beaumont. So here is my manager's contact information. Jason Tang, he makes me put it on there. And then here is mine. So like I said, I will be working very close with the city of Beaumont in the business hub and connecting with all the other organizations in there and being more of a mainstay within our community. So if there's any business that has any question, wants to reach out with me, wants to connect one-on-one with me, I'm more than happy to do that and looking forward to it. So do we have any questions for me? How did I do on time? Is that okay?
Yeah, fantastic.
All right.
It doesn't look like we have any questions. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Of course. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the public comment period. Any one person may address City Council on any matter not on this agenda. If you wish to speak, please fill out a public comment form provided at the back of the back table and give it to the city clerk. There is a three-minute time limit on public comments. There will be no sharing or passing of time to another person. State law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking actions brought up by your comments. Nicole, do we have any public comments this evening?
I have no written requests. Benny, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Okay. So brings us to the consent calendar. Are there any items? We have Councilmember Finn's on item G seven.
Mayor, I will move to approve items G one through G twelve.
I'll second. Have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Voit?
Yes.
Mayor Laura?
Yes. Okay, that brings us to item H, Youth Counsel Report.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Sophia Baranco. I am the Youth Counsel Secretary for 2025 through 2026. Is there anything they, I should start off with, or can I just start with the? Okay. So first, we just had a recap of the city council meeting highlights, and then we discussed the upcoming events, and we had the selection of elected seats. We then discussed the Brown Act and how to implement it into our council, and then we discussed the subcommitting updates and our future youth council goals and objectives. And we just recapped the youth council from 2024 to 2025. We then established the goals and objectives for the upcoming year for 2025 through 2026. We had the establishment of the subcommittees, and then we discussed the future agenda items, which is just the field trips and staff presentations. For staff comments, we just had the cancellation of the November eleventh Youth Council meeting, and then we just had the city council representative comments, the youth council comments, and then the city council report out assignments, which was the selection of youth council member to report out for the next city council meeting, which is me. So yes. Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
That brings us to item I, Public Hearings. Item I one is continued public hearing to consider the ordinance amending Title Fifteen, Building and Construction of the Beaumont Municipal Code. Mr. Stephen Jones.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, community development director here and the office of the Fire Marshal are presenting item I one to amend portions of Beaumont Municipal Code Title Fifteen. And I do have a presentation. California Assembly Bill 306 introduced two key changes affecting building regulation and local code adoption. First, model home master plan validity may continue for up to ten years, provided no substantial design changes are made. And you know what? This presentation is for later. I can just talk. I apologize. Number two is local code amendments are prohibited from being adopted, affecting housing construction if those amendments were not already in place by September twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. Staff concluded that amendments to Appendix J were authorized or recommended for cross-lot drainage, subject to the discretion of the city engineer. And proposed changes are the same code changes that council has approved in the last two code cycles here, that total about six years running. Staff is proposing construction status equity that would promote inspection requests in quick succession within thirty-day increments for work begun without the benefit of permit issuance, rather than the one hundred and eighty-day period traditionally allowed. A provision to grant one thirty-day extension for unauthorized work is being introduced tonight, along with other amendments in this draft ordinance. With language from our chief building official, who is away, traveling the region, providing training and teaching for other officials unable to attend tonight due to the ICC conference, I quote, "If unauthorized work with no permit has commenced, the building official may grant no more than one extension of up to thirty days," end quote. Deputy Fire Marshal Starkey and Supervising Fire Marshal Clay are here today to discuss proposed fire code and wildland urban interface changes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Michelle Starkey, Deputy Fire Marshal with Riverside County Fire. I'll give you kind of some brief highlights from the amendments that we made, starting with the California Fire Code. Most of the amendments that get changed in there are just basically code sections that get updated and changed from the stated options, so we correct those in our amendments. Starting with the application of the Wildland Urban Interface Code, we identified that any conflict between that code and the fire code, the more restrictive provisions would apply. That under cost recovery, we did some update, updated language for clarity and consistency. We have a section for remote access, where it requires two points of access. That may not always be feasible, so giving the fire official the ability to approve as is if needed, we added that language. Under sprinkler exemptions, we did add for fuel canopies that they do not need to be sprinkled if they are under ten thousand square feet. We upgraded to ten thousand square feet because of Walmart, Sam's Club, Costco, their fueling stations are a lot larger, so we don't need, need them to be sprinkled. So we upgraded that to the ten thousand and under, do not need sprinklers. Some other key amendments are for the mobile fuel, mobile food preparation. They need to have fire protection equipment onboard if they are providing grease-laden vapors from frying foods and things like that. So they need to have that fire protection equipment, and it must be serviced. So we added that language into the code. For fireworks, there's a restriction for fallout zone. There's different shell sizes for fireworks, and it's seventy inches per, seventy feet per inch of shell. So we wanted to upgrade that fallout zone because we are finding that the shells and pieces are falling from the sky a little bit further out, so we're bumping that up to a hundred feet per shell. So say, a two-inch shell needs to have two hundred feet of fallout zone around the perimeter. We do have a high pile storage section that we relocated into a more appropriate section. And then we included the wildland urban interface for fire flow requirements of fifteen hundred gallons per minute. So that kind of summarizes a lot of the big changes in the fire code. The Wildland Urban Interface Code is brand new, so under Title Twenty-four, they gave it part seven, basically taking the Wildland Urban Interface Code from other areas. So in the fire code, it was under chapter forty-nine, and then we had in building code section in other places. So the state decided to condense that into its own code, so that is part seven. In the administrative section, there is a list of permits, and we wanted it to match the California Fire Code, so we added additional two permits, so they both line up. And then as far as like area designation, we identified the fire hazard severity zones. We indicated the ordinance that was adopted and passed here in Beaumont, that language is included. We identified the construction for the wooi areas to include all the fire hazard severity types, so moderate, high, and very high. We also have setback requirements for structures located near protected habitats that they must have a hundred-foot clearance. Now, there are allowable reductions if they meet certain qualifications, like non-combustible fencing, block walls, hardscape, maybe they don't have windows on that side, they can get a little bit closer to that protected habitat. Under fire protection plans, we are going to identify proposed plants, irrigation, vegetation, vegetation reduction around emergency access. So the county is actually working on a guideline right now for the approved type of plants. The state hasn't come out quite with the list yet, and so we're working on identifying that in a guideline in the future. And then things like no firewood, firewood located under decks, green belts, having that break with wildland fuels and structures, and then utility clearance requirements for fire protection, adding fire protection water supply. So you have a utility pole, you want to have clearance vertically from that. So those are some of the main highlights. We do these amendments because we want to do it for the safety of not only the residents, the commercial businesses, visitors, as well as suppression personnel. And doing these amendments provides consistency across the whole county, so we're trying to get everybody on the same page. So whether you're a builder in India, here in Beaumont, down in Temecula, you know that you could kind of expect the same requirements, they're not different throughout the county. So having a little bit more restrictions on things allows for ability for insurance, maybe insurance breaks, and actually eligibility for grants out there. So that's pretty much all I have to wrap up. I know there was a question earlier in the day, so Supervising Fire Marshal Clay Shepherd is here, and he can address that question that came up.
Good evening. I believe, Mayor Laura, you had a question regarding some of the modular, modular, modular units. So in the, in the city in the past, we have done an hourly plan check fee versus, which is significantly lower than an underground fee for modular units when they are required to have sprinklers. The sprinkler requirement is two thousand eleven, I think? Any, any new mobile home or modular unit constructed after two thousand eleven requires fire sprinklers in them. The only time that, that a more restrictive requirement would be in a modular unit would be if a fire hydrant isn't within a certain distance of all portions of the exterior of that building, and that would require additional fire sprinklers in such areas as closets or bathrooms if they're under a certain square footage. So that's the only time that we would potentially get into requiring more stringent requirements in a modular unit. And like I said, the, it is a reduced fee for only inspecting and reviewing the underground line that feeds those modular units, so.
So, thank you for that clarification. If you do require the additional sprinklers, you send them back to HCD to have those installed and inspected, and then you just get a certification that that was done?
Yes, or, or we can actually visually inspect it in the field, making sure that those, those certain areas do have the fire protection.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that very much.
No problem.
I know we went through everything really quickly, but if you have additional questions, we're here to answer them.
Thank you. So with that, I'll go ahead and reopen the public.
Mr.? Oh, no. Yeah.
I'll open the public hearing at six forty-eight. Do we have any public comments?
I have no written requests. Benny, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
No callers or comments. I will close it at six forty-nine. Councilmember Finn?
Yes, thank you. Question for, and related to the defensible space. I know there's inspections that are possible if, if a prospective buyer or homeowner would like to do one. Is there any significant changes to that, or, or, I guess, or question would more be, what's the easy way to have one done if somebody needs one, especially if it comes to insurance requirements, or they're buying a home, or they're trying to sell it? Because we have many more neighborhoods in Beaumont that have been affected by the new maps.
Sure. Currently, CalFire is doing those inspections. However, that is transitioning to the Riverside County Fire Personnel, so we will be handling those requests. It's not quite set up yet, but it will be coming to us. But if somebody needed one today, they would put their request on through the CalFire website.
Okay. And then, once that change has been officially made, could I ask that you guys reach out to the local Realtor associations and so forth, and then let city staff know and that we can help get the word out?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Awesome. Thank you.
Seeing no questions? You have a motion?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll waive the full reading and approve the first reading by title only. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Beaumont, California approving the adoption of two thousand twenty-five edition of the California Building Standards Code, California Code Regulations Title Twenty-four, Parts Two through Eleven, with amendments and amending portions of Title Fifteen, Buildings and Construction of the Beaumont Municipal Code.
I'll second. Have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Voit?
Yes.
Mayor Laura?
Yes. That brings us to item I two, Public Hearing Introduction and First Reading of the Helmet Ordinance.
Mayor Laura, just prior to moving on, I just want to make sure, and I, I think I know the answer, but I just want to verify that that, the motion was introduced with the amendments that were stated by staff. That's my understanding of the motion, and so just want to confirm with the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Romo?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. This is a public hearing to introduce and do a first reading of the helmet ordinance. So back in September second, city council heard a discussion item on this topic. The idea of this ordinance is to require the use of protective helmets, not just for electric-assisted vehicles, such as electric bikes, but also for human-powered vehicles, skateboards, inlightened skates, non-motorized scooters. That was the direction that the council had given us at the time. So the ordinance has been prepared, and it's before you, and I wanted to bring up to you, there is on your desk a draft ordinance. It identifies some additional changes that were made to the ordinance since the preparation of the staff report. And I wanted to let you know that after talking to our police department, there was a concern that some of the requirements for education of helmet requirements would create some additional burden on staff to create such a program. So to make it easier, simplify, on page seven, you'll see under First Offense, it's just a straight fine of twenty-five dollars, as opposed to having a warning and education requirement. And then on page eight, C, or I'm sorry, yes, C was removed. It identified in lieu of imposing a fine to complete a safety course, et cetera. And then also D, the last sentence was removed, such individuals may be offered community service or alternate. So again, that just creates an additional burden on staff having to come up with a program. So we're introducing this with these changes to the ordinance. So as you recall from the discussion item, the California Vehicle Code classifies e-bikes into three categories, and Section twenty-one, two, one, three requires helmets only for class three operators of all ages. However, cities are permitted to enact stricter local ordinances, which is why we're bringing this to you today. The courts have routinely upheld the ability of local governments to impose stricter safety standards, where state law is silent or permissive. So if enacted, this ordinance would exercise the city's police power to protect the public health and safety and welfare. The city council therefore has the authority to discuss extending the protective helmet safety requirements to all operators and passengers of both human-powered and electric-assisted devices, regardless of the age. So tonight's recommendation is to hold this public hearing, waive the first full reading and approve by title ordinance, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Beaumont, adding chapter ten point three five, which is titled Use of Protective Helmets for Operators of Human-Powered and Electric-Assisted Devices to the Beaumont Municipal Code. So that concludes my report. If there's any questions, our city attorney is also here to answer that. Thank you.
Thank you, Gus. I'll open the hearing at six fifty-four. Nicole, do we have any public comments for this item?
I have no written requests. Benny, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Okay, I will close the public hearing at six fifty-four, open it up for council discussions. Councilmember Martinez?
Um, so just to clarify, it looks like the
So just to clarify, it looks like the, for the fines, they'll be resetting yearly? Is what it looks like? Is this every 12 months?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Seeing no questions, I'll go ahead and make a motion to waive the first full reading and approve by title only in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Beaumont, California, adding Chapter 10.35, Use of Protective Helmets for Operators of Human-Powered and Electric, Electrical-Assisted Devices to the Beaumont Municipal Code, with the changes as stated in the, in the report.
Mayor, I have a, sorry, I have a question or two.
Sure.
So you got me thinking about the, the demand it would place on our staff, as well as Section D talks about people who have a hardship waiver program. One reason I think we were moving towards this direction was to limit our liabilities. So could an option for somebody whose financial hardship be something like a waiver that says, I understand I'm supposed to wear a helmet, and if I don't, then I'm not holding the city liable? Are those kinds of things, something that could be included?
I believe we could still have a warning, sir, without having to have them go through an educational program, but let me go ahead and turn it over to our city attorney.
Okay.
So the hardship waiver is intended simply for the financial component, so it's a financial hardship waiver, much like we have for our administrative citations, where somebody cannot afford to pay the citation. We've enacted a hardship waiver, and the criteria used to determine whether or not somebody has a financial hardship is based upon the HUD guidelines for low, very low-income individuals. In terms of requiring a waiver of the liability, I wouldn't say you can't do that, I don't believe a court's ever opined on whether or not that would be enforceable, given the coercive potential nature of something like that. We certainly will be using the lack of compliance with the ordinance as a per se violation of a duty, which would limit the city's liability for any negligence on the part of the city in cases where we're sued.
Yeah, my concern is, though, I think in, in one of the cases we're talking about, I don't think that the city was negligent, but the fact that the, the injured party was not aware of any kind of helmet ordinance, because we didn't have one. So my question is, if we are going to let some, you know, if, if they pay the fine, then they're admitting that they know this rule exists. If we give them a financial waiver, are we putting ourselves in a position where they could come back and later and say, well, yeah, you know, I, I hurt myself, and I'm going to sue you for half a million dollars, and, you know, do we have any teeth in it with a financial waiver, or is there a way that we could put more of that in there?
Well, we can certainly add language to the financial waiver, and have them, if they're going to take that route-
To sign something.
To sign something that would waive it, if they're going to take advantage of the hardship waiver. Otherwise, they can pay the $25 fee.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I needed, Mayor. Appreciate that.
Sure, not a problem. So we had a motion?
I'll second it.
And a second. Have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Voight?
Yes, can I just add one thing? Are we able to look into any type of helmet program that potentially we could hand out if there is a violation, or somebody states that they don't know where? If we, if we had some type of helmet, not necessarily from the city, but I do think that there are resources, community resources available, that we could at least give that.
I can work with the chief on that. I'm sure there's programs out there.
Yeah, I think so. Thank you. Yes.
Mayor Laura?
Yes. Okay, that brings us to item J1, Approval of Professional Services Agreement with HDL, Corin, and Coen for Property Tax Consulting and Auditing on Audit Services.
Mayor, understanding that we've been with HDL forever, and the staff report even clarifies that they're one of the few in the state that do this, I'd like to, if there are no questions or concerns, move to approve J1 and J2.
Can I just add a comment, too, on J2 for HDL? Just to let you know, there will be another agreement coming forward in the future, and that's for business license, too. So just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be happy to second that, but let me check to see if there's any public comments on those two items, so that we can-
I have no written requests. Benny, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Is that for J1 and J2, correct?
Benny, just to clarify, we don't have any callers for J2 either.
That's correct, no callers for both.
Then I will second the motion made by Councilmember White for J1, and also J2. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Voight?
Yes.
Mayor Laura?
Yes. Excellent report. That brings us to item J3. Fee Schedule Update for City-Owned Electric Vehicle Charging Stations. Ms. Mendoza?
No such luck. No such luck, the same thing? Sorry. Just have to wait a second.
Nice try. I give you A for effort.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you, you have an item to consider updating our idle fees at our electric vehicle charging stations. So as you're aware, we have a couple charging stations across the street. We've been tracking data, and this last fiscal year, we've seen a huge increase in the amount of idle hours, vehicles totaling over 299 hours, 171 hours, when the vehicle stayed there at least 15 minutes past completion. So we did some surveys of some surrounding charging stations, including the Tesla Supercharger, the Beaumont Coles, Desert Hills Outlets, and Riverside County's city-owned parking facilities, and looking at that average, we'd like to make a proposal that we increase our idle fee to $2 per hour. And it's worth noting that our rates per kilowatt are updated on a quarterly basis, so we are taking into consideration the upcoming Edison rate increase that most of you are aware of. So we are looking at that, but we would definitely like to increase the idle fee, and it needs to be done by resolution, so I ask that you consider that this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know the mayor had a question specifically about notifications, so if any of you with electric vehicles, or friends with electric vehicles, you sign up through an app for the, for the most part, and it does either text you or notify you through the app when your vehicle is charged. I did confirm that with city staff that use the one across the street. They get the notification, they walk out there, grab their car, and leave, so it does work.
Perfect. Thank you. Nicole, do we have any public comments on this item?
I have no written requests. Benny, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
I'll open it up for council discussion. Mayor Proton Voight?
I'm sorry, thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, it's changing from the city's current $2 hour fee to the 25 cents per minute.
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I did transpose that.
If nothing further, Mayor, I'll move to approve the recommended action.
I'll second.
Roll call, please?
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Voight?
Yes.
Mayor Laura?
Yes. Thank you very much. That brings us to item J4, Regulation of Vacant and/or Abandoned Property. Mr. Stephen Jones?
Yes, and now I have a presentation to see, which was included in your packet. So, good evening again, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, Stephen Jones with Community Development, presenting item J4 to discuss potentially expanding provisions for regulation of the existing abandoned property registry. Tonight's request is for council to consider direction to staff. Beaumont Municipal Code Title 8, Chapter 8.54, is a 2008 ordinance that regulates foreclosed and vacant residential properties in response to the significant housing bubble price increases in the real estate market in the early 2000s, which helped lead to a decline in 2007. Updating a vacant and abandoned property registry could be essential for several reasons tied to evolving industry practices, and the need to promote responsible property ownership and partnership with the city among all property types. Potential provisions could include adding vacant land and structures, and improved enforcement tactics to ensure safety and property maintenance that blends into the existing fabric of a safe and thriving community. In to summarize, shifts in real estate trends, the need for improved community outcomes, including staving off blight and encampments, and promoting ownership accountability and partnership are all reasons to warrant the discussion and direction for expanding provisions that regulate vacant and abandoned properties. Staff recommends direction to provide an ordinance, where the next step would be to formally introduce the proposed ordinance to, for a recommendation from your planning commission prior to council action. And this concludes staff's presentation. Available to respond to any questions or comments.
Thank you very much. Nicole, do we have any public comments on this item?
I have no written requests. Benny, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
I'll open it up for council discussion. Councilmember Finn?
Yeah, quick question. Would this include vacant land owned by government, other government agencies?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Will this include fines, or is that going to be in another ordinance?
So far, we're proposing to use the existing and current administrative citations, and fines are assessed there.
Okay, so whether it's vacant property, or there are structures on the property, the same fines would apply, correct?
Correct, yes.
The, the, one of the, the questions or concerns that I have is the, having penalties on properties that need to be cleared, or the brush needs to be cleared off of. There's been a, an ongoing issue with some properties where the city has to go ahead and clear that, and they have to put that money on the tax rolls, and then if the property sells, or whatever, we get the money back at, at a later time. I, I love the idea, the fact that we're going to now register these properties. I just think there's, needs to be a strong incentive for property owners, or absentee property owners, to take a bigger interest in their property that's located in the city of Beaumont, to keep it clean and safe.
Thank you, Your Honor.
We can consider that?
Yes.
I appreciate that very much. Seeing no further questions, I'll take, accept a motion. Oh, direction, I'm sorry, thank you. So you have a direction?
Our consensus to move forward?
Yeah. Yes. We have consensus to move forward, thank you. That brings us to item five, Discussion and Direction on Proposed Amendments to Beaumont Municipal Code, Chapter 9.03, Special Event Permits. Mr. Daran Usher?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight's item is a discussion on updating the city's special event ordinance to make it more consistent and easier to understand for both our residents and our staff. The goal is to align the definitions in our municipal code with our current fee schedule, so that everyone planning an event in Beaumont has a clear and fair process to follow. Right now, the code defines a major event as one with 500 or more, with our fee schedule using 1,000 as a threshold. That difference has created confusion for applicants and staff, which determining which permit or fees apply. To fix that, we are proposing a new four-tier system that better reflects the size and impact of each event. Under the new system, Tier 1, which would be micro-events, would include gatherings with fewer than 500 people, such as block parties or small weddings. Tier 2, minor events, would include 500 to 999 attendees, which would be similar to community 5Ks. Tier 3, intermediate events, would cover 1,000 to 2,499 attendees, such as small concerts or sports tournaments. And Tier 4, major events, would apply to events with 2,500 or more people, such as parades or citywide festivals. Each event would, would begin with a free pre-application review, where staff helps determine which tier the event falls under. Certain factors, such as alcohol sales, road closures, outdoor cooking, or large stages, could be moved into a higher tier to ensure safety and proper coordination. This approach makes the process more flexible and fair, based on both size and impact, without adding upfront costs for the applicants. The fee schedule would also be updated to match these tiers, ranging from 200 for micro-events, up to 5,000 for major events, with fees tied to the level of staff time and resources needed. It's important to note that the fees are not changing, it's still deposit-based, so the fees would be based on staff time. For smaller events, Development Review Committee, or DRC, may not be needed, which will be determined by the pre-preapplication process.
Okay.
Overall, this update improves consistency, transparency, and fairness. It makes event planning easier for the public, ensures city resources are used efficiently, and aligns with our broader goal of improving communication and streamlining the process across all departments. Thank you for this time, and staff is here to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you very much for the report. Nicole, do we have any public comments on this item?
I have no written requests. Benny, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
And I will open it up for council comments. Mayor Proton Voight?
Yeah, thank you for this, and I really want to thank staff for your work on this. I think it's been a confusing point for some time for some of our community members who are trying to, to hold some events. In reading the ordinance, which I think is what we, we currently have, it does state, let me get to where it's at, that it can only be, can only claim, I think, or do one with, for three, every three months, excuse me, I just had it pulled up, and now I can't find it. Hold on one second. That's the proposed one. Maybe that was in the current one, and we got it removed out of there.
It's 9.03050, and it's Section B.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is it still in on the proposed new one?
It still is.
Yeah, so it says on Section B, only one special event permit may be obtained every three months for any particular event site over the same person, persons, or organization. My concern is, just as we get closer to the end of the year, as holidays stack up, you know, you kind of end up with Halloween, Thanksgiving, and so I would like to consider maybe not limiting that. And, and I do really thank you for mentioning the free pre-application process, I think that's a really key component as well, so, but my recommendation would just be to remove that.
Do, do we have people who are doing more than three? Or just every three months, so you couldn't do two back-to-back? Is that what you're?
Yeah, I think my concern was, I was thinking about HOAs, that, that may have a trunk-or-treat, or some type of Halloween event, and then are going to have a Thanksgiving, or like some type of gathering like that, a, a fall festival, and then would have some type of Christmas. So that's all, that falls right in the three months in a row, and knocks them right out. So just trying to be, you know, respectful of, of them.
Yeah, quick question. So on the, towards the bottom of, well, in the report, it's mentioned that it's important to note that private events on private property may not require special event permits unless one of the more, one of the above triggers are present. So I get concerned, is if I go back to the triggers, and I look at Bullet 5, the outdoor food preparation using grills or kitchens. So if we're having a small gathering of 10, 20 people, and the taco person comes to make tacos, is that going to trigger a micro-event permit, because they're using a small device in the backyard?
Phenomenal question. That was something that we had discussed when coming up with these triggers, and for a private event like that, that would not trigger an event, this was more limited to if an outdoor kitchen was being put up or created that wasn't pre-existing, as well as the possibility of food trucks. And so if something like that was involved, even if the attendees were 20, 30, or 40, it would still be one of the triggers that would possibly move it up, and then would require staff to be involved.
Okay, and that, and the, and I asked, because when it said could be, you know, I'm thinking that's a potential of mass, because if you're doing a whole, you know, 30, 40 gatherings in your backyard of people, you know, that's quite common. So I didn't want that to trigger a micro-event, if not needed, unless, you know, but that makes sense. So as long as I'm, I can be assured that that's what you're looking at, then that makes sense. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
If you've been to one of Councilmember Martinez's parties, you'd understand why he was asking.
So, just a question on the outdoor food preparation. How, does that conflict with the other ordinance we have, where you have outdoor food preparation easy-ups that are in violation of the ordinance?
You're talking about the sidewalk vendors?
Yes. Yes.
And, um, we'd have to take a look at that, but I don't think so. The intent of this is to regulate, um, number one, alcohol. If they have to get an ABC permit, the police department wants to be involved.
Right.
Selling food, selling tickets, um, inviting the public for, you know, some sort of a event where you're going to make money off of it, that's really the intent of this. But we don't want to, we don't want to conflict with what we already have in place for the sidewalk vendors.
Right.
And then we're going to bring something forward to talk about a better process for food trucks. This is really to eliminate the everyday citizen that wants to have, you know, a, a wedding in their backyard with 50 people and bring in the taco guy from having to do the special event, really. That, that's really the intent of it.
Okay. I, it's a great idea, I appreciate trying to eliminate the bureaucracy involved with trying to get that, lowering the, the thresholds was a great idea, so thank you very much for Councilmember White?
I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, um, maybe a question for staff if they foresee any problems with Mayor Protem Voit's recommendation of pulling out the, the, the number of uses, okay. So we don't, we don't expect somebody to jump on the bandwagon and go, okay, it's party time, let's go.
No, and we, you know, some of you have heard me say, we are of the law, we are not above the law. And so we have multiple events within a very short timeframe in the fall and the winter, and if we expect the public to follow these rules, we should be following these rules. So we, we understand, you know, these events are expensive and so I don't gather that's one entity is going to have one every month. It's more, they get compacted at the end of the year.
Okay, all right, so I can support Mayor Protem's recommendation, thank you.
So, seeing no questions, we're good. So we'd like to direct, are we good with directing staff to bring back an ordinance admitting public, admitting title nine? Brings us to J six, resolution exempting governmental entities for non-public safety-related permits, permit fees, and deposits for special events. Gus?
Uh, yes, Mayor, members of the City Council. On a related topic, uh, this is a resolution that would exempt governmental entities from special event permits and associated fees and deposits for events that do not require public safety assistance. So as it exists, Title Nine, Section 9.03 of the Beaumont Municipal Code regulates special events, as Darren was mentioning, uh, and this is again to protect the public health, safety, and welfare in accordance with the city's police powers, and it establishes an application process, the special event permit process, uh, as well as the ability to make exceptions to special event, uh, process if specifically authorized by the City Council. So the requirement for special event permits, it stems from the need for public safety review. You know, as we all know, these events often attract large crowds which have the potential to cause impacts to the community. However, we also understand that these public entities, they want to be able to put these events together for the benefit of the public, uh, so we do not want to be too burdensome on them. They've got a limited budget and they want to put in as many events as possible. And as Mayor Protem Voit was stating, you know, sometimes these do happen, you know, month to month, unless you want to pick your favorite holiday, right? But, um, in an attempt for us to collaborate with these agencies, uh, we'd like to be able to have a resolution that would exempt them from having to obtain a special event permit and pay these, uh, deposits. However, if public safety is required, it wouldn't, uh, remove that requirement in a sense. If, uh, we need police personnel out there, we need fire personnel, um, then a special event permit would be asked for, but without the deposit that we typically ask for now. Uh, so in the spirit of collaboration, we're asking for this governmental agency exemption resolution, and again, with a resolution, we feel it'll be simpler instead of having an ordinance, uh, to do it. Uh, and if these following conditions are followed, then they'd be exempt. Number one, the exemption, again, does not include direct costs for public safety services, uh, which are not limited to police protection, fire inspection, building and safety, et cetera. Um, secondly, public safety service costs will be determined by the city, and an estimate for those services will be provided to the other government entity 30 days prior to the special event. So it's important that we have something ahead of time, uh, but also that we give it to the entity, uh, 30 days ahead of time so they can be prepared. Uh, third, the governmental entity will be billed for the actual costs of public safety services and will pay the city within 30 days a receipt of the bill for the actual costs of public safety services. Fourth, in the event, public safety services are required, including, uh, services anticipated for like traffic control, police, uh, governmental entities will be required to provide the city with a site plan and relevant information, and that site plan would come in the form of the special event permit application. It allows us to track that event and have something, you know, that we can say, this happened last year, now if you follow the same event, you haven't changed anything, you know, we may be able to use that same site plan. Um, but again, it's for us to be able to track it. And the other thing is, in order for the city to determine the type and amount of public safety requirements, we're asking that the information be submitted at least 30 days prior to the special event. It helps staff, you know, uh, coordinate everything because sometimes when it comes in too late, um, then we're rushing to try to get things done. Uh, and be failure to provide the information by the ci- to the city at least 60 days prior to the event, it can result in the following: the city withholding its approval for a license required by ABC, the city denying, denying the requested public safety services, or imposition of a deposit, which right now we're saying it'll be exempt from a deposit. So staff is recommending this resolution be effective starting January 1st and remain in effect until the City Council, uh, decides to modify it or repeal it. Uh, the fiscal impacts that we've seen, on average, last couple of years, the city's been collecting about 15,000 from governmental entities. Um, and again, that's an average, so the fiscal impact will be a potential reduction in the annual revenue of 15,000 a year. But again, keeping in mind that at times you waive these fees anyways, you know? Uh, so staff does recommend that the City Council adopt the proposed resolution. If there's any changes that you'd like to see to the resolution, this would definitely be the time to bring it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole, do we have any public comments on this item?
I have no written requests. Benny, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Okay, I'll open up for public comments, uh, council comments, excuse me. Councilmember White?
Uh, what is the definition of a governmental entity and could we add that as part of, I didn't see it, maybe it's in the resolution as to defining what a governmental entity is?
Yes, and I'll just let you know, one of the reasons we put governmental, um, because it could be in a sense a quasi-public entity, something that's a, an entity that provides services to the public without taking a profit, but, um, City Attorney?
And, and I think the, the governmental entities within the city are, uh, the library district, the parks district, the school district, so those are the types of governmental entities that are contemplated by this, uh, ordinance. Most governmental entities are also registered with the Secretary of State, uh, and we have to provide who are, the board members are so we can also use that as a verif- verification of governmental entity.
Is there a way?
There is no definition in, in the resolution.
Is there a way to add a little more clarity to this so that they, uh?
Can we add examples?
Group thinks they're a governmental entity and they're not, and then it's at, past their 60 days or whatever?
So we, potentially, we could do governmental entity, including but not limited to a school district, park district, library district, yeah, um, water district, um, it's not an exhaustive list, but some similar types of agencies. So we can certainly add that to the resolution.
I think that'd be, I think that'd be helpful.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Mayor Protem Voit?
Yeah, I just wanted to take some time to say thank you to, um, the attorneys along with staff for their work on this. Um, when having conversations with some of our partners in the community, um, we really tried to address those circumstances here to highlight the impacts, um, on their organizations as well as the impacts on the staff's organization. So that's really the spirit in, in which this is, um, written and hopeful for implementation is where we continue to provide that, um, that partnership with everybody and provide the services that really our constituents benefit and we all share the same constituents and taxpayers, so, um, you know, making sure that we are, um, we are being the good neighbors with regards to that. So I just really wanted to say thank you for the work, um, with regards to that.
Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I had the same question, um, councilmember White adds, so I appreciate that, um, for the clarification. Um, my question is, second question then is, um, for the resolution, if it were to be repealed at some time in the future, um, how much time does the public need to be won't, um, notified in advance before that happens? Um, and then number two, if it were to be repealed, uh, do we just default to the current language in the ordinance that exists currently?
That would, um, taking your last question, yes, the current ordinance would be in effect. Uh, in terms of repealing, you can, uh, in the ord- uh, resolution, if you are seeking to repeal this, you could provide a notice provision and time. You don't have to, resolutions, once they're repealed, they're ineffective, but you can, uh, provide that it will, uh, be repealed effective a certain date. Uh, if I can, did I answer all your questions? Uh, and, and perhaps it would be in the first whereas, where we would put governmental entities, including but not limited to the entities we discussed, and that, that change would be the resolution that if it passes tonight, Mayor LaRue would sign.
Yeah, I agree. Are you just toying with me?
Well, if there are no further questions, I will, um, move to, uh, make the, the proposed amended changes and approve, uh, this resolution.
I'll second. Have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Voit?
Yes.
Mayor LaRue?
Yes. That brings us to item J seven, set the time and date in place for a special workshop.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, there i- is an item that staff would like to discuss, I believe, at the request of City Council, and that is to take a look at the signed ordinance as it pertains to billboards. Uh, currently, the billboards are limited to a one-for-one. If somebody wants to put up an electronic billboard, they must own one currently and take that one down. And so there's been discussions about revisiting that, and I believe that council is going to want at least, uh, an hour and a half to, maybe two hours to discuss it at length. Um, I'm suggesting a few dates if it's, works for council's schedule, either November 3rd, 5th, or 6th, if any of those three dates we can coordinate.
Um, yeah, before we settle on a date, do we really need that much time? I mean, couldn't this be done as an item on council as opposed to a separate night workshop? And we've talked about this, this-
Many times.
Topic, many, many times, and I think we could do it in a half hour, plus our mayor's going to get us out of here by eight o'clock tonight, so, um, he's still mayor.
If that's, yeah, if that's council's prerogative, we had it originally set for a meeting, but after we started diving into it and looking at the, um, various aspects, we felt council might want to focus on it.
So I can bring back the shot clock?
No.
Oh, okay, well then maybe we-
That won't hurt me, that'll hurt others here, but that won't hurt me.
Oh, famous last words, but. Okay, you heard it here for folks, so if we-
We're happy to put it on November 4th.
Okay. Can, um, is, is, there's no way to set, well, can we set a time limit for discussion or is that not appropriate? I just, my fear is that this will be a larger discussion than your, I appreciate your, your optimism.
No, I understand, but the inconvenience of taking a whole nother night to do it, um, I, if, you know, we, we've been pretty good over the years that if we have a topic, it takes us an hour and a half to do it, we do it. I don't know that, um, that it's going to take that long for this topic.
Okay.
But if, if it does, we do it. I just, I think, um, taking another night, I, it's just, it's, it's hard on me to, to leave work early as much as I need to.
Okay.
And I, and again, I just don't think this topic warrants a workshop, personally. If everyone else thinks it needs to be a workshop, I'm, I'm good, I'm good to go.
Okay. Thank, I appreciate that, thank you. Before I get too far down the line, do we have any public comments on this item?
I have no written requests. Benny, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Councilmember Finn?
I, I'd rather see it on a city council meeting night, I'd rather have one long meeting versus two short ones. I mean, and, and, and in comparison, if we're going to discuss, discuss for the same length of time, I'd rather have it during a city council meeting.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, I agree, I was just going to ask staff what it looked like in your crystal wall for that day as far as items, but, um, I, I think we can do it in, in a city meeting, so I agree.
Okay, so we'll have it on the November 4th.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure, not a problem.
Drink your coffee.
Good dinner, good, healthy dinner.
Healthy, not too served. From like almost today.
No turkey, as a tryptophan and all that.
Yeah, no turkey. Yeah.
You know how that, you know how that works.
[laughing]
Okay, but legislative updates and discussion, long time no see.
Great, as always, to see you guys. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight's item is a quick one, um, the legislative update summarizing the bills that were signed or vetoed by Governor Newsom at the close of the legislative session. Long story short, they were all signed, of the ones that we were tracking. So, but I will highlight a few of the items that are listed in the staff report. So one is SB 707, which modernizes the Brown Axe teleconferencing rules, which means that we'll need to update, um, both council and commission meeting procedures to ensure that our technology and agendas meet the new transparency standards. Other bills such as AB 339, related to local public employee organizations, now require at least 45 days written notice before workplace policy changes, and that's something that will work with the Administrative Services Director, Gary Mendoza, to update those labor relation procedures. Another one is SB 415 and AB 735, which were both AB 98 cleanup bills from the last session, which both deal with logistics and truck routes. SB 14, SB 415 was signed and will require the city to update truck route maps, municipal code, and development standards. And another bill is SB 634 on homelessness, which will require coordination with our local partner, partners, utilities, and county agencies to align policy and outreach efforts. Overall, these changes aim to enhance transparency, promote sustainability, and strengthen the partnership across jurisdictions. Staff will continue to evaluate each bill's impact and will bring forward any budget amendment or policy changes as council needs. Tonight's information, uh, or tonight's item was informational only, and staff recommends that council receive and file this report, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I just had one question real quick. Um, one question for you, Darren, with regards, I think you said it was SB 405 with regards to the truck routes. Uh, we do have the truck route two by two, does, does this seem like something that needs to come back to that committee? I think we set the meeting out, and councilmember Finn, if you can remind me, I believe we set it out for every three months, but do we need to move that up with regards to this? Should we consider doing that, or will you guys bring back a recommendation?
So staff is prepared to bring an ordinance, uh, one that you guys had, had previously seen.
Okay.
Uh, next meeting, that ordinance will take care of both SB 415 and AB 735. Beaumont as a city is way ahead of the game in terms of the truck route, meeting these obligations.
Okay, perfect, thank you, I appreciate that.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I can add that, and we, we haven't had, set a date yet for our next meeting, um, but we wanted to share what we have done with our neighbors.
Councilmember White?
Um, first of all, thank you for the report. I apologize, um, I download, I use a PDF on my app here or on my, uh, device, and I couldn't click to your links, but I'm doing that here, and I had a question regarding That is the, the new rules, what, what's it called? And I noticed just now, looking to it real quickly, not, I apologize for not taking the time to read this, um, I understand a lot of the teleconferencing rules, remote, you know, whether or not- you know, whether or not a, a elected can attend a meeting remote and what they have to do to go through it. I think we know that all pretty well. My concern is something that has come out of the, the COVID epidemic was the phone calls for, you know, are there any callers on the line? Are there any callers on the line? I have two comments on that. Number one, I think that no one comes, no one calls, and I think it's, it's sort of a waste of time. And then the other thing is that I think people should make the effort to come in to one of our meetings and speak to us directly. So not knowing whether that's addressed in this, and understanding that what you said, I think when you introduced this item, that you would be bringing it back for us to adopt the changes, I just wanted to put those comments in your head as far as when you come back. And I'm sure we'll have a, a healthy discussion about that, but I don't, I personally think that we should go back to people come in and talk to us, and, and then it's important to them. And in the meantime, we're paying staff to sit back there and answer the phone, and we're also getting, you know, people are sending in emails and require, requesting us to read them. I think in the past, before COVID, someone sends us an email, we all get a copy of it, and it becomes part of the record. There's, it's not necessary to read it. And I just believe that if, I spent many council meetings coming in before I was ever on council, and it's important, I think, to come into our meetings. It's not like we don't have enough seats for people. So I just wanted to put all of that into your mindsets. When you bring back the item, that's something that I'm, I will be looking for having a discussion on. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. No further questions, I guess. Thank you very much, Darren. Brings us to item L, Economic Development Update.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here tonight to provide just a brief update on ICSC Western, which was held in Palm Springs at the end of September. So ICSC, as you know, is primarily known for its big, gigantic annual conference in Las Vegas each May, but they also do a series of smaller regional and other educational events all throughout North America throughout the year. One of those held locally was ICSC Western that was held on September 29th and 30th in Palm Springs, with pre-conference activities and networking held on Sunday, September 28th as well. So the regional conferences are significantly smaller in size than the large Las Vegas conference. Some numbers to help demonstrate the vast difference in size and scope of these conferences is the 2025 Las Vegas Conference had about 34,000 registered attendees, whereas ICSC Western in Palm Springs had just over 2,700 registered attendees, so much, much smaller. Same with the exhibitors. The Las Vegas event had about 1,000 exhibitors signed up, whereas Palm Springs, we had only 180 exhibitors. So with that said, we did not bring as large of a contingent to the Palm Springs event. You'll recall in May, we had, I think, a group of 10. We had two council members, one consultant, and seven staff members with us. In Palm Springs, it was just myself, our Economic Development Management Analyst, Joe Cale, and Mayor Protem Jessica Voight. And that was really sufficient to cover all of the meetings that we had in Palm Springs. So due to the relatively small size, you'll recall in May, we set up a large dedicated booth just for Beaumont. We had staff there to staff the booth and greet people as they walked around and came to talk to us about what was going on in Beaumont. We did not do that in Palm Springs. I think that was the right choice. We, for $300, were able to partner with Riverside County. That gave us a place to have meetings. Many of the meetings that we took, we had in the, in the booth of the developer anyway, so we only used it a handful of times, but we did use it. It also gave us a place to display and distribute marketing materials, and quite honestly, it gave us a place to touch down in between meetings. Sometimes we only had 10 or 15 minutes to kill, and so that gave us a nice place to rest our feet in between meetings, check emails and things like that. So that worked out very well. One unexpected benefit, at least, that I thought was a benefit, was also it gave us a really nice opportunity to connect with some of our partners from throughout Riverside County. It gave us, you know, those little 10, 15-minute increments. It was nice to be able to connect with all of those cities. It was County Office of Economic Development, and I believe there were eight other cities in the booth besides Beaumont. So our city team, we scheduled seven meetings in advance. When we went to Las Vegas, I think we had 11 meetings scheduled in advance. So seven was pretty good for a small conference of this size. Some of the folks that we wanted to meet with simply weren't there, but it gave us an excuse to reach out to them and touch base with them anyway. And then in addition to those seven pre-scheduled meetings, we brought with us a short list of folks that we wanted to meet with, having reviewed the exhibitor list. So these were largely restaurant and entertainment uses, so we made sure to go around and distribute our information to them and, and collect their contact, contact information so that we could follow up with them after the conference. So of course, we can't disclose all of the folks that we met with. We keep that confidential until we get to a point where we don't have to anymore, and that's when it starts to get really exciting. But we can, we can definitely say with confidence, they're all uses that would contribute greatly to the quality of life here in Beaumont, certainly to our sales tax, our property tax, and to our employment base. We have already followed up appropriately with everybody that we met with. We scheduled some visits and tours of Beaumont. One of those is happening actually tomorrow, so we'll be having lunch and a tour of the city tomorrow. Another has promised to be in town before the end of the year. That was his commitment. So we are working on getting these developers and folks to come out here and see all of the growth and everything that's happening in Beaumont. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions for the council? Excellent report. Seeing no questions? You're free to go. That brings us to City Treasurer Report. Having none, City Clerk Report.
There is a notice on the agenda for council of the upcoming vacancies for the boards and commissions. So this is informational only, the, unless there are any edits or recommendations that council would like to implement. If not, the application period will be open. We'll start select, receiving applications. We'll present them in front of council for selection.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a quick question. I didn't see Planning Commission on there. Is that-
Their terms are four years.
Every odd year, then?
Yeah, every four years, so there's, there are no-
Okay.
-openings this year.
Thank you.
Okay, City Attorney Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to report on another Senate bill and bring it to your attention. It's Senate Bill 827, which amends the government code requiring elected officials and now senior staff to complete training regarding fiscal and financial training within six months if you're newly elected, or if you're a current council member before January 1 of 2028, unless your term ends before then. The bill becomes effective January 1st, 2026. We will have to maintain the records for five years, and there will have to be instructions on the website on how to access the training records for each elected official and senior staff. And our office will be working with city staff to ensure that we comply with the new fiscal training requirements. It's much, it's in addition to your ethics training, and it includes financial administrated, administration, budgeting, reporting, and auditing, capital financing, debt management, local revenue mechanisms, pensions, investments, and ethics, ethics in resource stewardship, fiscal planning, procurement, and contracting principles. So just an update on that bill.
Is that a college degree for that, or?
What's that?
College degree for that?
Quick question, Mayor.
Yes.
So I would assume then that there would be designed courses then for us to take and so forth, and then so we'll get email notifications when those are due and so on, right?
Yeah. I, I believe it's going to be similar to your AB 1234 ethics, or conflict of interest training, and so we'll, we'll certainly be continuing to work with the league to ensure that all of you get the necessary training to ensure compliance.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. Good question.
And then just to touch on SB 707, which is the Brown Act, and just to touch briefly on Councilmember White's comments, the, the new statutes do talk about two-way remote attendance, and any disruption to that two-way remote attendance, and seeks to modernize, if you will, the Brown Act. We'll see, as we delve, delve deeper into the Brown Act, we'll see what the state means by modernization. In addition, it'll cover translation and outreach, which means that you must translate meeting agendas and participation instructions into certain applicable languages, which is those spoken by at least 20% of the relevant population with limited English proficiency, and other requirements. You'll, will be required to distribute the Brown Act to all members of the legislative body. Before that was permissive, now it's going to be mandatory. There were modifications to the Brown Act related to social media and your use of social media platforms. It does clarify that you can communicate with members of the public on the social media platforms while prohibiting you from directly responding to another member of the same legislative pot, body post regarding issues that come within your subject matter jurisdiction. It will allow for reasonable accommodations and the use of teleconferencing to accommodate for a disability of one of the members of the legislative body. And there are other, it reaffirms the public's right to record open legislative body meetings and, and other requirements. So we are delving into all 25 pages of the statute to ensure that, first of all, we're in compliance and working with you so that you understand what the changes are.
I heard from another elected at the Cal Cities that the language requirement includes a sign language. Is that, do you know if that's the case?
I didn't, I do not know if sign language is, but if you have 20% of your population, it, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I doubt we have that. But I, and that's what I said to this person. I said, no, we're not going to have to do that if we don't have that many. So anyways, it'd be interesting to hear what you find from that. Sorry to jump in.
That it?
That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple announcements. The trunk or treat is October 31st at the sports park. I wanted to let council know that we have several departments, city departments this year, that will have a trunk, which is different from years past. I think there's a little bit of a competition going on. The City Manager Monthly Report for September is in your packet. I want to thank Julie for putting that together and for all the staff for providing her that information. If we haven't announced previously, she does have a full-time communications specialist onboard and working. You all have met her. It's Princess. She was our fellow. She did apply and was a successful candidate, so she is officially a city employee now. And last but not least, I just want to put it out there again that the city, for the second year in a row, has earned the Triple Crown Award with GFOA. Congratulations to our finance team and for the rest of the city team that assists finance in ensuring that we are recognized in such an auspicious manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Okay, future agenda items.
Mayor, I have a quick question for the City Manager. I apologize for this, but it was on the consent counter. I knew there was something I wanted to ask you, so if you don't mind, I just want to ask clarification on two items on your purchase order summary report. You probably won't need to look them up. The City of Beaumont Recreation Guide, what is that, and how often is that? I mean, I know what that is, but how often does that go out?
The Recreation Guide goes out quarterly. That's our, where's Julie? That's our quarterly magazine that we mail to all of the residents.
That's what I thought, but the 39,000, is that for, per quarter, or is that just-
That's for the year.
For the year. Okay. And then the other one was the Grassroots Lab LLC Consulting in Public Information and Education for 69,000?
Yes. That's the gentleman that you met, Rob Karink, that came and presented to council on the Phase 1 for the potential revenue measures. Council workshop.
Got it. Thank you.
Good?
Good. Thanks.
Seeing no requests for future agenda items, council reports. Councilmember Finn?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of city staff and local volunteers, we met for our first planning meeting for our Veterans Expo, which is coming up on Saturday, January 24th. So we've been doing that annually, and things are going well, and so we're excited to be able to do that again. And then I also attended the Public Safety Memorial, where we added names to our memorial out front. So I appreciate the efforts that went into that. It's a very nice event. So that's my report for the evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor. So I attended the Youth Council, of course, as we heard. The new officers were elected, and I do know that the Director Carlos Luna and the Assistant Director Eliana Gregg were re-elected. And we'll be moving the meeting to November 10th, because the 11th, of course, falls on Veterans Day. I attended the San Jacinto State of the City, and for the Cal Cities Conference, very insightful, enjoyed the breakout sessions, very informative, and the time to meet with other council members from surrounding cities, very valuable, having them all in centralized location, very productive, and a great way to promote communications between cities. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember White?
I just have one. I attended the Public Safety Memorial. Outstanding. I want to let you know, thank you. That's all.
Okay. Mayor Protem Voight?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. So, real quickly, October 15th, had coffee with the mayor. Those are still well-attended. Also attended the, the memorial where we added the names. That was fantastic. That plaza is top-notch. I love that plaza. The Cal Cities was great, thanks to the work that you guys did to get us the room there. That made it a lot easier to communicate with folks. I attended this last Saturday, I attended our Monster Mash event. I just want to give props to the staff. This was a great event, large. It had a, they used the parking lot as well as the inside. They had a petting zoo. They had 17 games. They had a monster maze in the, or, in the parking lot, lots of different entertainment, DJ that was working outside. They had vendors, looked like a market night. Very well-attended. Supervisor Gutierrez also showed up. Was great to see him there. So a big thank you to staff. Also, a big thanks to the Interact Club for helping with the game booths. Just, it was a great event. Lots of candy. I felt sorry for the guys that were reeling that candy in and out all day long. It was like a machine. Also, I do want to give props to Julian Fontaine, Gillian Fontaine. I received some feedback from an individual that did a minor event, came in, got the information from Gillian, told her exactly what she needed, came back and was able to submit on the second try, and then process went through. Their waiver was put on the agenda today under consent. But the, the person that, that processed this was the first time that this person had ever done any, anything like this. Said the help from staff was great. They got all the information they needed. I just want to make sure that, I brought that up because this has been something that council's been working on, is to try to get that information out to folks, making that process easier. As you can see, on the agenda items we had today, we're really trying to eliminate the bureaucracy and just make it easier for these folks to put on these events. So just kudos to staff for all the extra effort. And that concludes my comments. And 7:54?
Before you adjourn, I know, this is important. I wanted to thank Julie for her presentation at Cal Cities. I don't think I've ever seen a panel where there was so much competition for discussion, from the panelists, to the point where you had to jump in to get- from the panelists to the point where you had to jump in to get, to get something said.
They always say something, is that what you say?
They did. They did.
You know, I, I obviously live in Beaumont, work in Redlands, grew up in Escondido, and what was the other one? Oh, Moreno Valley.
Yeah.
Those people from those other cities, I'm just glad I'm not on a council with them. That Escondido lady was something else, but.
You held your own, Julie held her own.
She did. Kudos.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We better hurry.
Yes. Seeing no other
We won't.
Seeing no other comments, I will adjourn this meeting at 7:55.